Live, okay. All right, we're good. Let's call the meeting in order for the Upton County Board of Commissioners. This is a special call meeting for Monday, December 6th. And before we go in, I'd like to propose an amendment to the agenda. Please, the board, we would like to add a discussion and possible approval of actions necessary to acquire the EMS license and zone. So if I can have a motion to...
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment? Okay, so it's passed. Okay. Well, the only other item on the agenda is a discussion of public safety budget for FY22. With that, I guess I'll... Alan, Jason?
Mr. Chairman, I think the reason we're here today is that the board had asked us to convene one more meeting before December 14th, which we're anticipating final approval of the budget. I think that there were several board members that had additional questions regarding the sheriff's office submission and potentially other items as well. So we're prepared to discuss those and any other items that you might have that are related to the 2022 budget submission. And as the CFO pointed out in his last communication to you, either over the weekend or Friday, the version you have is still unchanged as of the last time you've seen it.
Okay, so just so I correct my memory here, the version we have reflects the 8% that we discussed at our initial meeting?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Alan?
Oh. It's an 8% increase for the sheriff and school resource officers and a 10% for jail and 911.
Okay. Okay, and then after that discussion, we all received a letter from the sheriff asking us to reconsider. And so I guess with that, Dan, appreciate you coming.
Thanks for having me.
This is a biggie, and we need to have this discussion about way forward. So I appreciate Sheriff taking the time, event with me. I think we talked for about two hours the other day and just discussed a wide range of things. But if you just ask me, the bottom line is that to do a 15% is going to have a significant impact on not just our budget year, but on property taxes for next year, likely. So with that, I think we just need to have that discussion. So anything you'd like to talk to us about?
Well, you know, we've discussed this pretty exhaustively, I think, over the last few weeks. But what I've said all along is that we've got to remain competitive in order to keep the personnel that we have. And I have the privilege of sitting on post advisory council for the state. One statistic that sticks out in my mind is that within the last 12 months, public safety has lost over 10,000 employees. That includes jail officers, communications officers, police officers, you know, anyone that's certified by post. But they've only replaced about 7,800 of those. So that tells you that statewide, there are issues with the ability to track and to retain employees. I don't want to be in that situation where we're losing our trained and competent employees for people that are willing to pay them a better wage. And I fear that that's what's going to happen if we don't remain competitive. This is a Facebook post from Spalding County. If you look at the salaries on it, this is just, you know, less than 30 minutes from my office. These are even the numbers that we're competing against. That's not unlike what the city of Griffin has done. Of course, you know, this, they're starting, today, they're starting a detention officer of air at $43,067 a year. A certified deputy is being paid $47,566 a year. That still puts our, you know, with a 15% increase, that still puts our salaries some $2,000 less on the certified side for sure. And $5,000 or so for jail officers. So, I mean, we're not going to be able to stay in that game without increases. Also, the city of Tomlinston is anticipating, and we've always remained pretty consistent on our salaries, you know, comparatively. And for that reason, you know, not to have people going from department to department within our own community. But, you know, their proposal this year is 15% increase for their people, as well as a $3,000 bonus from the CARES money that's been available. So, you know, I feel the same sentiment that you feel, it's not wanting to cause anybody a tax increase. But also, I have the responsibility to provide a public safety function. And if I don't have the personnel, I can't provide that function. So in order to be safe in our community, to have competent people in our community, then I think it's necessary that we pay our deputies, pay our jail officers, pay our dispatchers a livable wage.
Sorry.
Sheriff, I think I'm correct in stating this, but I just want to make clear. This 15%, it's not additional to the 4.75 that we're already proposing for all county employees.
No, sir.
That's total.
That's total.
So right now, we're talking about a 10.25%.
Over what the employee gets. You kind of alluded to this in the last meeting, Mr. Watson, but, you know, we're behind this year, and then we try to catch up next year, we're going to go a little behind. And, you know, that kind of gets us hopefully into the pattern of being able to hold with, you know, whatever cost of living allowance that we do, you know, the next few years. But, you know, this gets us in the competitive region of the marketplace for this particular industry.
And I have one thing. Chairman Allen kind of already mentioned it, but, I mean, it's pretty clear that our budget in the current form, we're not 100% sure it won't have an adjustment to property taxes. But with this, it's almost certain that we're going to have an adjustment. So is that something that you're in favor of coming before us and asking for that additional amount? That's going to probably put us to a request for some additional military?
Well, I think that's kind of a loaded question. Of course, I'm not in favor of a tax increase, no more than anyone else is. But I also realize that if we're going to provide that level of public safety and retain the employees that we have in investment here, that we're going to have to pay those people the amount of money that their positions should be paid.
And appreciate you clarifying that, because I was thinking it was an additional 15% on top of what we've already?
No.
Okay.
How does this compare with other counties of comparable size?
That puts us in the, right in the median of those salaries. The salaries for the city of Tomlinston next year will be 25,000, right around where we would be. Griffin PD has increased theirs from 47,000 to 52,000, depending on where you come in. Fayette County, I realize that's not a comparable, but it is within driving distance of us, and it is within the same judicial circuit that we're in. Both they and Peachtree City have increased theirs to over 51,000, I think is what the number is. So, you know, the sheet I gave you today is Spalding County, which is, you know, just up the road, and theirs is 47,500. So we'd be $2,000 a year on the starting salary for less than they are. So it puts us in the ballpark. Pike County is somewhere in the 42, 43,000 range, as is Marywhitt County.
Mr. Chairman, just so I understand here, what Allen and the numbers, so basically, from what was proposed last time at the budget here, we're talking about a 2.5% increase of what we had already discussed last time with 8%.
Well, that 8 included the...
It's still be a 2.5. We're talking about 2.5% of what is currently proposed in our draft budget at this point.
We already have the 4.75.
Plus the additional 4.25 to give a total of 8. And in order to do the...
So this would be 7.
It'd be 15% for this year.
Right, I'm talking about versus the 15%. The 8 subtracting the 4.75 that we're up with, all at the point. Is my math right there now?
Yeah, I'm following.
You following?
If he follows you, I'm good. I just, you know, you know, the trend here. So we go back to the, you know, and Sheriff and I, you know, we've talked about this, and, you know, and we're, you know, we did 5% last year, we did 5% the year before. I think countywide, the year before, we did 1.75. Last year, we did 3. So every year, we have provided an additional percentage for our public safety folks. But since 2017 until, now, this chart right here, Allen, this FY22, is that the 8%?
Yes.
Okay. So with the one that was proposed to us at our last meeting, you know, we're looking at salary and fringe, that's, you know, $744,000 increase in six years. $750,000 increase. That's just in the sheriff's budget. The jail budget, $624,000 increase. In 911, a $207,000 increase. So that's 8, that's about a $1.5 billion, you know, salary and fringe in just the last six years. So my fear is that we're on this treadmill. I feel, you know, like the hamster in the wheel, we're going something. You know, we're keeping up, but this is what it's costing us. And then, you know, you know, we've talked about things in the past that we ought to consider to try to help the sheriff put some more tools in his toolbox with, say, like, you know, early retirement for long-term employees. I mean, we've got people that are in your office that have been there for 25, 30, longer years. So, you know, but they're not going anywhere yet. And, you know, at some point, you know, they're staying there until they're 65, I'm assuming, so that they can transfer, you know, they become eligible for Medicare, medical, I'm assuming that's what they're staying for, and also stay in there that long so that they don't take a penalty on their retirement. So I think, you know, just use that analogy, you know, we're on this wheel. I think at some point, we've got to get off the wheel and go to a different wheel. You know, I think you're always going to be chasing something, but there's got to be some other things out there. You know, one of the things, you know, the sheriff pointed out to me when we sat down was, you know, in Spalding County, they're paying the officers PAV plan, they're paying for that plan for the officers. And that's huge. It's not a lot of money. It's a little bit of an investment. I think what, 30?
$25 per employee per month.
Yeah, for your post-certified officer. So, I mean, so that's not a lot. But when you take these young officers that say, "Oh, I ain't worried about that because they don't see that far down the road," that's, one day, they're going to wake up saying, "Man, I'm glad they did that for me." You know, it shows the fear.
That's a great benefit. And I would like very much to pay those, you know. We have to, I'm thankful for every employee I have, and certainly those longtime loyal employees are, that's a tremendous asset to each person in this county because of the years of service and the historic knowledge that they have. So that's, you know, that's a big plus to have people who have that kind of tenure in a position such as this. And I get it does cause some delay in allowing people opportunity to climb the rank structure. But if they left today, it would be very challenging to operate without. And, you know, if we do that, I caution strongly that we're going to have to have a plan in place to make that happen. And that would allow some opportunity. And that has been some complaint on exit interviews when people have left, is that there's not that much of opportunity for advancement in the short term. And I think you'll see at some point in the future, when people start to retire, there'll be a time when there are a lot of people that retire within just a little while, which will create a good bit of opportunity. As it stands today, they can't retire without taking 1.5% per month penalty on their retirement. And there's no mechanism to carry any health insurance forward. So until they're eligible for social security health insurance, then they're not going to be covered, which is, you know, tragic. But that's the situation we're in. But immediate, and I get that, that there's a budgeting concern where we're going to have to fund that. But, you know, it costs a lot of money to run a sheriff's office, it costs a lot of money to run a jail. No county our size is unique in that respect. We all experience the same phenomenon within sheriff and every county in the state that's relative to our size. It's the amount of funding that goes into the sheriff's office and jail in those counties is consistent with what we have. And those are what the operation costs are. It's not, you know, personnel cost or something that, over time, is the greatest expense of running any business. But we have to invest in personnel to be successful in being able to deliver the services that we have to deliver. And when you get down to it, that's what we do, is we deliver services. If we're going to deliver law enforcement services, we're going to deliver jail services. We need to do that in the most efficient manner that we can. And to do that, we've got to have the most competent employee that we can afford to have in order to accomplish that.
I have something real quick.
Can I add one more thing? I think too, in the structure of funding for that, Allen, you correct me if I'm wrong, but the couple of increase in the amount of money, I think that comes too, where in the years past, we haven't budgeted for some open positions. So in currently budgeting for each open position, that changes the amount of encumbrance on that. So there's, you know, there's a greater number. And, you know, as it stands today, I'm probably 10 positions down. So all of that money would be budgeted, you're not actually paying that money. So that, you know, that shows a lot of, you know, on paper, it looks like you're increasing your budget by this great number. But in reality, if you've been able to fill those positions, it would've been so long.
Well, I mean, just from my standpoint, I mean, I'm all in favor of being competitive and staying up to par with our counterparts. But it's pretty clear, I mean, workforce in all industries is lacking right now. Public safety, I think, is even more so, just because of the nature of what you guys do day in, day out. So depending on, you know, what route we go, I'm in agreement with the chairman here. There's, we've got to look, you know, think outside the box and look at other areas, because I just, I do feel like no matter what amount of money we throw at this, it's never going to fix that problem. Now, if we're trying to get up to speed with our counterparts, that's one thing. But I definitely think we've got to think outside the box and think of some other areas that we can maybe rein this in, you know, a little bit more.
Well, I agree with you, and I'd like nothing more than to have a, you know, a system that is attractive across the board, other, you know, other areas, such as retirement. Those are huge factors. And, you know, traditionally in law enforcement, you know, the age, the magic age used to be 55, but we've never been in that situation. You know, state law enforcement has always seemed to retire out at about 55 years old. But they also had a way to carry their health benefits. And that's always been a hindrance for us here. It's always been a topic of discussion and concern for anybody that was, you know, working in our, I've been with the sheriff's, I've been the sheriff for nine years, but I've been with the sheriff's office for 30 years. And as long as I've been around, that's been a topic of conversation, and had to work until you were 65. And I think that would be a tremendous asset if we could reduce that retirement age with some benefit, some hope of not only leaving early, but being able to have some affordable healthcare to get you there.
Either we did that, you know, which sounds great.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds great. Is there anybody that wants the job anymore, though?
Certainly, there are people within the ranks to fill the positions with, you know, it's easy to promote somebody. Where my challenges are, are hiring somebody to replace the person that you promoted.
That's what I'm talking about.
So, you know, what ultimately I would like to, you know, and we've always kind of worked on this principle, and I've hired people directly that haven't been through our jail as an employee. So, you know, ideally, I would like to hire somebody as a jail officer, train that person in that position, and then send that person to the police academy and train them then on the law enforcement side. That's the ideal for any sheriff, because then you've got somebody that's familiar with, you know, most of the people they're going to be dealing with before they ever get to the street. But in reality, we can't keep those bottom positions funded well enough, excuse me, keep them filled well enough to get people through the training. And, you know, I think when you remain competitive and you focus on that, that it gives people opportunity to, you know, then train for the entry-level positions where you can promote with them.
So we just give the jail folks more money? Anybody else say?
I don't think that'll work.
But the problem is, and I'm sorry, I mean, the thing I'm having a hard time with is, you know, the sheriff's office is down too. You're staffed at 95%. And I get it, I get it. We got to hold the line, we can't, you can't go so far. I mean, you've got to have so many officers that are on patrol and doing those other things you need. But the problem we're suffering is in the jail. I mean, you're staffed at, I think you have eight open jail positions?
I do.
Eight. And so, you know, we're going to, we're going to take a lot of money and throw it across the board on everything, but is that really, that's not, I mean, our problem's the jail.
Well, our problem is remaining competitive and retaining the employees that we have. We, you know, we've got significant investment in all of those employees, and we want to retain each one of them. It's just like economic development. If you're, you know, you invest in your local business, you invest in your existing employee. Make sure that person stays with you and does that job. So, you know, I think that problem is twofold. I think you focus on the jail, and hopefully you'll, you know, improve those wages, and then be able to move those people toward training them to fill the positions that we need. And we're going to need, you know, additional law enforcement positions over the next few years. So those are areas that I think you have to, both, you had to address both of those.
And obviously, the reason this pains us so much, if we were just talking about the impact of this salary increase on our budget, and it was only the public safety piece, I don't think it would be as painful as it is. But when we throw in that we're now going to be confronted with providing some level of EMS coverage, I mean, that's, you know, we've got our heads in the, I don't think, we all know that there's going to be a cost associated with that. So you've got that, so between the law enforcement, public safety side, and then we've got the public health side with EMS. And then, you know, a large percentage of the property owners, you know, reside in the city, and that they're about to get hit with pretty healthy, because they'll share in that EMS cost, and then they're doing their thing with their, all their employees. So, you know, I mean, if you are a county, Upton County resident that happens to live in the city, you know, if we bundle all that up, your property tax bill is going to go up significantly next year, likely. And it may be, it may not be next year, it may be a little bit next year, a little bit the following year. And then you couple that on top of, you know, we've got this project that we've got funded that has no impact on the budget, but that's not what the taxpayers are going to see. They're going to see that. They're going to associate that project with the tax increase, and they're going to, you know, so it, and we have, we have a lot of people out there that are on fixed incomes, living modestly, and have been doing it for a long time. And, you know, this is going to be significant. And then hopefully, but, you know, hopefully to help offset some of that is, in two years, we hope, by then, we'll have this local legislation through, and we'll be able to, and the voters will approve this increase to homestead exemptions, which will give them some good relief. But, you know, this is just happening, this, what's that movie, Perfect Storm? You know, we got this coming this way, this coming this way. It's just, you know, and we all have, we all have, we all have those stories. That individual that you sit on their back porch, and you talk to them, and you tried to explain to them about their taxes, you know, every year, the tax bill goes out, and you go and you talk to them, and you explain the difference between, you know, inflationary growth and real growth. I mean, you know, we're fortunate that we're seeing a significant amount of real growth in our community, and that's going to go a long way to dampen the blow. But, you know, just based on, you know, staff's analysis, I mean, this is a tax increase. Plan and simple.
I'm elected by those same people, and I get that, and I understand it completely. But those same people expect me to be able to deliver law enforcement services, and that I can't deliver them if I don't have the personnel. And I certainly don't want to send substandard personnel, because that's all I can afford.
And that's why I'm thankful, and I'm really appreciative of you coming here, and us coming together in an open forum and having, this is a hard discussion to have.
Yes.
And I hope some people are either watching now or are going to watch later, because, and I was really hoping that the room would be full in here, because, you know, but it's not, you know. I want, you know, try as hard as we'll try to get the word out that this is the discussion that we're having, and as the elected officials responsible with you on this, you know, I want to hear from them now, because I know I'm going to hear from them in September. I want to hear from them now, you know. Are you willing? You know, I mean, I think our community is very, and I think we're blessed to live in this community that's so supportive of public safety, and, you know, we've seen it over the last few years, how the community has this outpouring. But, you know, it's one thing to wave the banner, it's going to be another thing to pay your tax bill when it comes, and that, and, you know, that's... But, you know, it's, it's one thing to wave the banner, it's, it's gonna be another thing to pay your tax bill when it comes, and that, and, you know, that's, that's, that's where I'm having a hard time with this.
Why, if that's a juncture, let me say, this doesn't affect my salary at all.
No, I don't.
I don't get a fifteen percent increase, my salary's set by the state, so this is, this is employee salary, it's not, it's not a constitutional officer's salary, so.
Is there, is there anything else we can do? Can we, can we pare this back, can we?
I know of nothing that we can do to remain, to remain competitive. And certainly don't wanna be in the same community with two departments in the same community, and a, a city police department paying more than a county sheriff's office.
But like I've said over and over, you know, when you look at total compensation, if you work for the county, your total comp is better than when you, as you compare it, because of family medical, because of the retirement, that, that, you know, it's, it's not an apples to apples when you compare starting salaries, you know.
We have much better.
And if it was, you know, they wouldn't be shut down thirteen, I think they got thirteen vacancies? You got two. And I?
I don't want thirteen.
I don't either.
I couldn't, honestly, I couldn't, I couldn't feel, you know, I don't want, I don't want, oh, I want two, I don't want, I don't want either.
When's the last time anybody applied?
Actually, I've hired a couple of folks in the last few weeks, so, you know, that, but, you know, we have a, we have a stable number that, that, that seems to work, especially in the jail. Then we have a transitional number, and then we've got a long-term number of people that, that stay. Now, I've got a supervisor who's, you know, a twenty-plus employee that I'm understanding is going to retire at the end of the month, that works in the jail. So, you know, I'll then have to replace that person, which, you know, will, will create an opportunity for someone, but also create a challenge for filling the position. We always seem to have a, a now hiring sign on in the jail. And I've, I've been holding a school resource officer position for several months now, because I haven't, you know, not only have not, not been able to hire or replace that, but, you know, I, I, when I get, when we're down personnel there, that is a, I mean, you'd notice that immediately, but, you know, I have, you know, I've got two people that are on light duty. Excuse me, I've got three that are on light duty at this point, and, and I'm having to fill those positions, you know, best I can, so. It hadn't been able to, I hope after the first of the year, to be able to put somebody into that SRO position to, to fill that. And that's another one that's budgeted, but it's not, at this point, it's not costing us anything, but nobody's actually found that position. You know, it's, it's just a challenge by the time, you know, you're dealing with, with people that are out on medical leave, or, or whatever the situation may be, those, when you're few in number, it affects you greater than somebody who's got abundance of law enforcement officers to draw from.
So with the exception of the jail, and that SRO, and then Jason, any other county positions that fall underneath, you know, our cognizance through you, what if we did a hiring freeze? We say, okay, with the exception of the jail, sheriff, we don't hire anybody else. We, we, I know we're funding these positions, I mean, so that means we, we, I'm just trying to figure out a different way to pay for this. I mean, sooner or later, you're gonna have to pay for it, but I, I don't, I don't.
What's?
I, I don't know, I'm just trying, I'm just pulling that out of left field, we haven't talked about it.
Quick question, on our current budget, the eight percent, is that inclusive of the COLA? So that's a total?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a solid, that's.
I just, I was taking notes as the conversation was going on, and I just wanna mention a couple of things that, that are not direct, directly related to the salaries that we're speaking of. Couple of things just to keep in mind, I know we've talked about it before, but one of the things that's important to realize is that one of the balancing strategies that Alan and I deployed to, to keep it to a five-point-two percent increase overall was a significant reduction in contingency. So you do have a, a contingency there, historically, we have not needed it or, or ever touched it, and, and I think Alan came to me early on and said, hey, this is something we could look at to, to try to balance this a little better. So i- i- if you kept that contingency the same year to year, the impact would be a lot greater. So I think our contingency that we have in the current budget is in excess of a half a million dollar contingency, and I think we're down to, isn't it one-hundred-and-sixty thousand now?
Approximately.
Okay. And I, I, we can let Alan confirm that. So it is driving, a- all of our increases to salaries, benefits and such are, are driving that a little harder than, so we've sort of artificially reduced that a little bit by lowering the contingency amount. The other thing I hear often when we're talking about strategies to not only retain people, but also to create opportunities within organizations is post-employment health benefits. And this is something that every organization is moving away from. And it's the same reason we moved away from, you know, a defined benefit plan, because there are costs that you can't define and you can't control. So I think, I think as a strat, you know, would it provide a strategy to, to allow people to retire earlier so that we, yes, but I think it would potentially have really an undetermined amount of upward pressure on your expenditures if we looked at that even for certain sectors. Another great example, and I know the, the sheriff's office is a prime example of where we're tending to retain people maybe past natural retirement ages in our, in our road department, and, and we're seeing the same thing. And we get a lot of, of feedback from those folks too, it's like, well, hey, you know, I, I can't consider retirement until I know I can get on Medicare. Maybe there's some solutions in the next couple of years we can deploy where we have some sort of happy medium, something we can contribute to, you know, like a flexible spending account or something that would help ease that burden so they could get on a intermediate, intermediate plan. But we would, we wanna make sure that that was defined, and it would probably, it would take us a great deal of research and time and effort to try to deploy those. That's not something that we could probably do before we adopted this budget. So those were the two things that you mentioned that I think are, first, the contingency, just a reminder, it is smaller, and that was to lower the overall impact of, of what we presented. And then some of the, some of the ideas, we wanna, whatever we do as far as in the future adjustments to our compensation plan, we wanna make sure that they're very definable. And, and they may be good strategies to deploy rather than just straight increase in salaries. And then lastly, I think the point was made, I made a note, I would classify our total compensation package as substantially better than the city of Thomason. So where I would say theirs is probably for municipal or county government, a little below average, ours is above average. So, anyway, just some thoughts I wanted to share.
So, so back to my question though, what would be the effect of, if we were trying to figure out a way to pay for this, if we, with the exception of those two, those two offices did a hiring freeze for this next year? You know, is that significant enough to make, make a, a difference in this so that it may prevent? And also given what you know about the next conversation we're about to have?
I, I mean, to me, you know, you know, a, a hiring freeze is kind of a, something in, in my experience is what we do is snap reactionary. So when we see, for instance, the onset of a pandemic, we actually entered into a hiring freeze because we were moving into really uncharted territory.
Right.
The only other time in my career where I implemented hiring freezes was during our, our great recession, where we could see, literally, we could see digests shrinking, and it was one way to try to manage the cost. So I would say that, you know, a, a hiring freeze would be something that you'd look towards as a, as an immediate reactionary stopgap, rather than a strategy.
I see hiring freezes as being ultimately something that leads you to a staff reduction, because if you can do a hiring freeze and you can go a year without that position, then I would argue that that position's probably not, unless, unless there's a significant reduction in the service or quality of service, that you probably don't need to fill that position. There's no staff reductions in your office at all.
I'd be in favor in my office of an expedited hiring process, if it's, if it's that competitive with law enforcement.
Well, what concerns me, you know, is obviously, you know, anything that's gonna impact our budget that can trickle back to the, to the property owner. But a bigger concern here to me is, is not necessarily the, the request for the fifteen percent. It is, you know, are we gonna be right here next year? That, that, that's, that's my biggest fear, is are we gonna be right here next year talking about the same issue? And if we are, I just feel like we're, 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 we're not doing what we need to be doing, that we need to be trying to figure out other ways to, to mitigate this.
I agree with you, and the answer, I think, is that we don't know, you don't know what those, you know, what those incre, you don't know what other people are going to do, what other government entities are going to do. But you can't quit because you gotta provide the service.
Right, and I realize, but, but it, it, ultimately, we're gonna get down, we're chasing the dollar. If the next county goes up a dollar, we gotta go up a dollar. We, we gotta somehow figure out a way, I mean, when somebody leaves here, is it strictly for the dollar? Is it something else? And, and is that an area we need to look at? You know, I think all is on this board right here, or everybody in this room, you know, we've all had different titles and worked for different places, maybe with the exception of you, well, you did work for the city at one point. But, you know, people leave places for different reasons, and, and that can be quantified into this big funnel and, and. But we gotta try to narrow down, why are people leaving, and is it just for the money? I mean, yeah, a guy's got a ride up the road thirty minutes, but that's, that's an hour a day, even though they're gonna give him a car, that's an hour a day. He's, he's away from home, away from his family, you know. Is the guy on the night shift really? He's been on the night shift three or four years, does he get an opportunity to go to a, a day shift? Well, that might come, we just, we gotta figure out a way to open up some things, because if we just keep following suit, well, they gave a dollar more, we gotta give a dollar more. We, we're never gonna, if we just keep chasing the dollar, we're never gonna, we're never gonna stabilize this.
I agree to an extent with what you're saying, but you also have to be competitive in that salary range in order to, to hire and start one. What's it gonna take for us to get the guy that may be driving an hour somewhere else from our community to go work some? Maybe we get that person to work here, keep him in our, in our community. What I don't want is to converse with that, that somebody leaving our community and then driving out in a car provided by somewhere else.
Right, and, and I, I get that, I'm just, I'm just simply saying this, and I'm, I'm gonna use just me personally as an example. If, if, if the company I work for said, okay, we're gonna put you on the night shift, but we're gonna give you ten more thousand dollars a year, you know, what I'll be doing tomorrow? I'll be looking for somewhere else to go to work, because I don't wanna work on night shift. I mean, so those are the type of things I, I feel like you gotta look at, you know. Even in, in the private industry, I struggle hiring people, and I, I bring people in, and they go, oh, well, I drive to Atlanta, and I make three more dollars an hour than your offer. And then, you know, I start saying, well, you're looking at the big picture, why are you there? Well, I'm just saying, we, we gotta do something other than, well, they did it, we gotta do it, they did it, we gotta do it.
But in, in my, in my industry, somebody is on the night shift, that's not an option.
Right, I, I agree, I, I don't agree with that, but.
That, that goes with this territory, so, you know, you got to, you gotta have that individual. You're not gonna get them if you're not gonna pay them. And that puts us median, that doesn't put us in the front, you understand that?
Right, right.
And I get it, and I'm thankful for every employee that we have, I'm thankful for every benefit that we offer, but, but, you know, when you consider, it's just, we're, we're in the middle, we're, we're median when it comes to, to all of those factors. So, you know, I think we do offer a good benefit package. We offer, you know, we make, what especially younger folks are gonna consider, the salary component of that benefit package attractive to them, then that's where they're gonna choose to go. But they're still gonna be in the middle of that, of that pool.
You know, one of the, the other things that we have not talked about, and, and it was, it's been mentioned earlier, you know, CARES Act money. You know, you know, we decided very early on that this, this money was what we, we really needed to alleviate the burden on the taxpayers to pay for much-needed infrastructure. So we're, we're our partners in the city and broadband. We've applied for that grant money to help offset some of that, so we've not had a conversation about potentially using some of that money for, you know, incentive pay for county employees. We won't know until mid-January whether or not we were successful in any of those grant applications, which may free up some of that money. But, you know, you know, I, you know, it's probably a good time to talk about that stuff, because I, I, I have it on pretty good authority, there are folks out there kinda waiting for us to come up with a bonus. And, you know, I, you know, we, we've heard that the city's entertaining that, and, and that's fine, but, you know. My experience with bonuses is, bonuses are here today, they make you feel good today, but next week, you forgot all about it. So I, I don't know, we've got, we've got long-term needs and sort of, is a bonus gonna make a big difference for your folks?
Absolutely, it'll make a difference for them.
A big difference, I mean, it's gonna keep them here, it's gonna, it's gonna endure them to the community, it's gonna, it would, you know, what, you know, if there was a way to do sign-on bonuses. I mean, I saw just, just yesterday, or, or I think it might have been this morning as a matter of fact, it was this morning, that there, no, it was yesterday, there was a sheriff in a different state, very, very small agency, twenty thousand dollar sign-on bonuses.
I've seen those too.
Yeah.
And I think those are definitely what we talked about, you know, in the last meeting, we talked about CARES Act bonuses. A lot of the jurisdictions around us have given their employees, you know, not just pay raises, but CARES Act money. And that has gone a long way, that's been a source within my agency of morale, is, you know, they didn't receive any CARES Act money. When I wrote you the letter that, that I sent on December nineteenth, I included that, you know, that estimation of what it would cost to do that at, at different breakpoints. But, you know, Crawford County did about five thousand, Lamar County has, has done five thousand for certified, twenty-five for non-certified, and my understanding is they're gonna do that for three years. Spalding County's three thousand per employee, and the city of Thomason is planning for a three thousand dollar bonus this year out of CARES Act in addition to fifteen percent raise. So absolutely, it makes, it makes a difference in the quality of life, but it affects morale as well. It makes them understand that they're appreciated. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again today, but my deputies, my jail officers, my nine-one-one dispatchers have worked when they have had to go into houses that, that people have had COVID, they've had to arrest people that have had COVID, they've had to report to work in the jail when, when the jail population had COVID. I've had nine-one-one dispatchers who've had to work overtime because of, of a shift of people would be sick that have had COVID. And they did this day in and day out throughout that pandemic. And of course, there were a lot of concerns, but not a lot of complaining, because they did that because it's what they're committed to, is serving in their profession, but serving people that can. So, yeah, I think it's, it's very beneficial that we reward the people that have been on the front lines and the people who've done that day in and day out, and made sure that, that we've been able to, to provide safety in our community. At one time, I was out with COVID, my wife was home with COVID, and three of my, excuse me, two of my command staff people had COVID at the same time. So we were down to just, you know, a very slim crew of people running the sheriff's office, and, you know, those people were dedicated enough to make it work, and I appreciate every one of them. So sure, it matters.
So, but, you know, a thousand dollars times eighty or two-hundred-and-twenty, you know, because, you know, the same folks did the same thing at the road department, they did the same thing. And then you throw in the volunteer firefighters, I mean, there were volunteer firefighters going in houses, there was no ambulance available. There was nobody else on that call except that, that, I, I was out there and saw one young man, he was it. And, you know, so they did the same thing, we, you know, so, so how do you, you balance that out? And then on the flip side of it is, you know, you know, businesses closing because they didn't have employees, you know. We, we, we haven't offered anything for, for some, you know, some of that, you know, because we're. Because we're investing in infrastructure. We're trying to make sure that we grow, um, the right way so that it's long-term, it's a, it has a long-term benefit, it's not a short-term. Yeah, I feel, I feel it, I feel good, they appreciate me, but, you know, what have you done for me lately, a year from now? And I, and I know, I mean, I know, you know, it's a significant investment. I mean, they, they, you know, the city of Thomason doing three thousand dollars, they've got, how many employees? I don't, I don't know.
Eighty-nine.
Yeah, so, you know, three hundred thousand dollars. Three thousand dollars for us is, you know, times our employees is, is gonna be over six hundred thousand dollars. Almost a bill of tax.
As long as you get the grant money, you offset it with, you offset your CARES money.
As if we get the grant money. We kinda already wrote a check for that. I mean, you know, that, that's my biggest concern here, that's why I, in my, I was of the opinion that the, that, that those funds are off the table, we've already written a check. We committed those funds. And if something, if we don't get those grants for some reason or another.
I think you probably will. You stand a likely chance of getting those grants.
I, I, I hope so, and, and then, then the conversation will change. You know, if we, if we have an abundance of CARES Act money or grant money that's available to help pay for some of this stuff. But, you know, the number one thing that the community's asked, our number one is workforce and broadband, workforce housing. We can't grow without those three things moving the needle in the right way. And so that's why we made those investments. That's why we haven't been able to go, hey, wait a minute, we're, you know, cause what happens if we don't get it? Well, then something's gotta give. We, we're fortunate that we're in a situation that we're in financially with the decisions that have been made over the last few years. But rubber's about to meet the road on some of this stuff. So there's, there's nothing we can do internally with, you know, all our organizations to find another way to pay for this. We're, we're staffed at optimal level. I mean, I, I don't think we've ever had a, a manpower study come in. We had the classification study. One thing we talked about a couple of years ago was to, to, to have Carl Vincent come back and, and do an efficiency review study. I mean, for a county our size doing what we're doing, you know, these are the levels that we're, that should be staffed at. You should be at this with the road department, you should be at this with whatever, you know? Would you welcome that?
I would, yeah, I, I mean, I'm certainly gonna welcome anything that, that stands for improved efficiency, but...
I mean, they come back and say you need more?
I can tell you what it takes to run a sheriff's office. I don't know what it takes to run a, a road department, but I know all about the sheriff's office. And I, I could stand more employees, not less.
Have we beat this to death? And it's a hard, and it's...
And I understand, and I appreciate each one of you, because I'm a taxpayer too. I get that. But I also realize that we, you know, we got, we got to provide the service. That's what it costs to do that.
Does everybody, I, I just wanna recap to, to say, is it, does everybody understood the numbers I was talking about? Oh, you get work, okay. So basically, we're two-point, two-five percent difference from what we, what you subtract back out, the, the, the standard, um, pay increase for the all-county employees. Today, we're sitting here having this conversation. We're talking about two-point-two-five percent, which is gonna be a significant impact.
Which is a, which is a...
Two-five, uh, uh, over what we currently...
I agree.
Backing out that.
Bottom line is fifteen percent.
Yeah, total. It's ten, two-five over the full of that.
And we're, and we're doing not quite five across the board. So, okay. Well, we, we, we're not approving a budget today. Uh, I guess...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we, uh, staff would need direction as to what to present for approval on the fourteenth.
Today?
Before the fourteenth.
Well, we have, we have, we have the budget that, that we discussed earlier.
We'll have to re-combat it.
So, um, and we have...
Or if it's to be amended, uh, I'm staying, yeah, Mr. Chairman, your point's taken. If, if, if it's to be amended as it's presented now, we would need to know what the amendments need to be.
So, so you're asking for us to make a decision right now so that you can, we'll crunch the numbers?
Yeah, if it's gonna change our, well, we'd have to know and that way we'd have it prepared.
I'll put this one...
Cause we'll have to draft it into a resolution for your approval.
I'm not, I'm not ready because of the, the discussion we're about to have next. I, I think it would be, it would be more prudent for us to have this, this next discussion and then come back and say, okay, um, you know, what are we gonna do here? I mean, y'all, y'all see my point there? I mean, we have, we have, we have some general ideas and, and Jason will present some of that in this next discussion, but that's gonna be another significant impes, uh, piece to this whole thing. I mean, and, and, and I, and I also, I mean, I, and, and I hope people are watching. I wanna hear from the community. Not, you know, we have a public hearing for the budget and nobody came. How many, how many phone calls have any of you gotten from the community on the budget?
Zero. No one's asked us, go out, the phone won't stop ringing.
I, 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 I'm imploring you, if you're watching this meeting, to reach out to your commissioners and tell us what you're thinking. You know, I mean, there, there's, there, you know, we need to, we need to know. Because, you know, we represent everybody in this community. And, and I really have a difficult time knowing what this potentially could impact some of the, some of the, some of the folks in this community when they're looking at, we're looking at what city may be doing and you put a couple of that with what we may be doing based on EMS and, and this. So I, I want feedback.
Has the city voted on that, can increase it?
No, I don't think so. They have a meeting.
They waiting on those?
No, sir, I don't believe they are.
I think they have a meeting, I don't think. Yeah, so, um, you know, I, I, and if we can come up with some other way to try to make these numbers, uh, more palatable. Any of...
No.
I mean, if anybody wants to make a motion on, on this, I mean, and provide them guidance, but I just, that's just my opinion. So...
Well, I say we, we at least talk about this next one and, and hopefully Jason's got some impact on what the next thing, he ain't gonna impact on what the next thing's gonna cost.
Too unknown.
Very unknown.
Unknown. I mean, we can speculate, we can speculate, but, uh, we just don't know where, where it's gonna land. EMS world has been impacting significantly in, in, in this world in the last two years as well, so...
And I don't think we'll know that by our meeting next week either. So I think this is gonna have to be something we decide on.
EMS is probably gonna be a, a budget amendment later in the year.
Yeah, I would, I would anticipate, uh, well, both bodies having to make a, a, a decision, probably pass when their budgets are adopted. I, I think that's a likely scenario.
Okay, all right. Well, if there's nothing else, sir, we really appreciate you. More than you know, and I appreciate your patience.
Thank y'all for hearing, I know it's tough, you know, I get it, I, I...
You wanna swap seats for a day?
No, I mean, I will, but I'm elected by the same folks you're led by, so...
That's why I wanna hear from them.
I get them, and I wanna hear from them, and I have heard from them, you know? We're fortunate to be in a, in a community that overwhelmingly supports law enforcement. That's a blessing to serve, you know, serve. Not everybody wants, wants to have strong law enforcement, but our community does. We've had a good history of that, so...
And I, and I, and I share that, and I, I, I have a, you know, other than you, I have a unique perspective too, as a father of one of those guys out there doing it. I know, you know, and, and I, and he, he's appreciative, and his peers are appreciative as well, so... Great community working, and I don't care if you're working up here, road department, or rep department, or sheriff's department, it's a great community working, so, all right.
I think I'll hang around when we finish the conversation, that's all right.
Absolutely.
We can pack it by that, pretty much, as well.
Okay, so, so next is the discussion and possible approval of actions necessary to acquire our EMS license and zone.
Mr. Chairman, um, and I, and I believe almost, well, every commissioner's been involved in this discussion at some point individually. Uh, but I thought I would go over a, a quick summary of where we are and what the timeline is moving forward. As we all know, a community will, community ambulance will be exiting our community next year. Um, we've also talked about in our last update what the process is as far as it relates to their replacement. Uh, I think the only thing that's changed, and I think we've had, I said, individual conversations, but for the purposes of, of this public and group conversation, the only thing that has changed in that is that we have been, we have gotten indication from the Georgia Department of Public Health, the EMS division, that they will allow us to submit for a EMS license to compete in the RFP process that will be, uh, initiated later this month.
So, um, and so it kinda helped, Jason and I talked a little bit about, um, about this. And, and so we can really cut to the chase on this discussion. I mean, the, the first thing that we gotta have a decision on is do we as a board, is it our desire to acquire or Upton County the EMS zone? I mean, cause if, if that's not our desire, then this isn't easy conversation. This is about a five-minute conversation.
That's correct.
If it is our desire, then it's more of a lengthy conversation. So, so with that, you know, is it the desire of this board to acquire the zone? Do you wanna add to that?
Mr. Chairman, I think I do, because I need to go over, and, and this is in my estimation, what we, as in your staff and, and the board would be required to accomplish in that amount of time to pursue that. So, um, and, um, I provided you an executive summary for the record and for the minutes of the meeting, but in essence, we would have twenty days from now to, oh, sorry. Um, yeah, correct. Well, um, the submission for that license will have to be on Sunday, the twenty-sixth. So we have, it's an online portal, we, we would work to that end. We'd have to have a submission in by the twenty-sixth at ten AM. So what that would require, um, is that if the EMS license application is approved, so, so to get that license, we would have to have what's called a, um, and I wanna make sure I read this term exactly correct, a service delivery agreement with a third-party licensed EMS provider. So in that amount of time, so between now and December twenty-sixth, your staff would have to engage interested parties to try to make that happen. So you would need to authorize us to submit the license application on your behalf. You would have to essentially grant us approval of the suspension of your purchasing policy solely for the purpose of negotiating with EMS services and interested parties that, so we could have someone to partner with to do the submission. We simply don't have time to do a procurement process. You would have to acknowledge that we would engage local consult, consulting services. One of our, um, prominent residents is retired from Georgia DPH and has been an invaluable resource to your staff thus far and has really helped us through this process and has helped us communicate with the people we need to communicate to get this far. But we would have to engage them so that they could help us put this submission together. Uh, we would have to acknowledge that we would also be required to engage the city manager and our hospital CEO in this conversation to help us with that. Because in the end, this is also a joint project and would require city approval for the budget portion of the project. And then we would have to meet it once or twice, depending. So it, it, your staff would have to negotiate on your behalf a submission that we could, we would have to have the basics of an agreement hammered out with a third party to the point where we could submit for the license application and then compete for the zone. So we would have to have all the financials worked out, and we simply, we're exactly nowhere right now. So we know who the interested parties are, and we've taken the time to meet with them and get to know them a little bit. So we would have to have all that negotiated and approved by this board and, and MOU or potentially a full contract, and then also approved in a joint meeting for a, a joint projects meeting with city council to approve the amendment for that budget.
Okay, so what's the challenge? So...
Hey, say something about that.
So...
It's twenty-four hours in a day.
So I guess what we're saying is that we're ready and willing to accept the challenge if the board wants to pursue that. Now, the, the, the question came up as well, costs associated with that. Now, I've heard wide ranges of anywhere from zero to a lot. And we, until we start this process, we won't really know or understand. The other thing we have to have and understand is what are we asking them to provide? So we have to, you know, and I think we've been given some clear indication from our consultants what a minimum standard would be, but we would also have to, you know, vet that. And that we could vet that through the negotiation process. Cause through this process, we would basically vet a firm, uh, agree to partner with them, discuss terms, have them and us look at the data and come up with a, a, a strategy for what level of service we would provide. Discuss any financial support for that if that's required. Have those standards set in an MOU and a contract. Once we have that, we would have to review and approve it by the board and then city council.
And then even after all that, there's no assurances that we would get the zone.
So if we can accomplish all that, then we can actually submit with this company into the larger RFP process for consideration through the regional council. So we would go through all that just to be able to participate.
And we're not, and we're not required. I mean, we go through all that and we get a partner, um, someone to sign an MOU or whatever with us. And then assuming we get the zone license and then to execute, we, we don't, I mean, we're, we're obligated to them. We don't have to, because it's considered a technical service, I suppose, we don't have to put this out for an RFP and, 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 and open it up for, for, for bid, do we?
No, but I would prefer an, an attorney to answer that question to me. It's my understanding we do not have to do that. Uh, the, the other thing that we'll have to, that staff will have to work out with guidance from the board eventually because you'll approve the contract, is what the term would be and what, or the term. So the length of the term and the term, so whether that's a, a, a three-year with a ninety-day out or a hundred-and-twenty-day out in between, or...
All right, so, so to answer the first question, is, is it the desire of the board to pursue, pursue getting the zone license?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, all right, well then, uh, we wanted to do that in the form of a motion.
I think that would be appropriate.
So, so I heard Commissioner Jones...
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and do whatever necessary to try to procure this, uh, license for the, uh, county of Upton.
And may I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Would, would that include the items under, um...
No, it's yet.
Okay.
The first question is, do we wanna pursue it?
Okay.
So, so I have a motion for Commissioner Jones to second it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna rephrase this. So, uh, yeah, a motion made and seconded for, uh, staff to, uh, we're going, it is our desire to pursue the EMS zone license for Upton County.
Correct.
Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Okay, so now then, let's, let's break it down, so, so the, um, given the, the, the list of things to do here rather than take these down, obviously, you know, so, you know, we, we've been talking about this, and, and I appreciate y'all helping come up here and talk to, uh, Jason about it. You know, that, you know, the, the enormity of the task that we have in front of us. So, that said, you know, we are fortunate to have, uh, I don't know if you wanna be called prominent or not, but, but anyway, we, you know, we, we do have, um, should I, can I say his name? Is there a reason not to?
Oh, Jason thought you was talking about him.
Well then, uh, well, anyway, I, um, well, you know, um, we have been fortunate to have the assistance of Russ McGee. As y'all know, Russ started the EMS world in Upton County, I think when he was seventeen years old, and has, it has been his life's work, and he worked for, and like Jason said, Department of Public Health, doing EMS. So he, he knows the, he, he knows the business, and, and, you know, this is what he has done. He is, he has since retired and living here, uh, you know, I've had conversations with him over the last few months about this, because I think we kinda saw the writing on the wall. Uh, so he, uh, Jason, not to put words in your mouth, so it would be our, our, it would, it would be our desire to, uh, authorize you to, um, hire him as a consultant, or, you know, au- authorize you to create a part-time position to assist with you in this, this task, is that what you prefer?
Yes, sir, yeah, so I, it, it, in my opinion, the best approach would be ma- making him a fully authorized agent of the county. So, um, doing a little research into the creation of my position or the legislation that created my position, as, as long as I'm not delegating my authority without your approval, then I would have the ability to, to make a, a temporary appointment like this, so I would, I would be doing that probably through June thirty of next year on a part-time basis, and it could be anywhere between zero and twenty hours a week, just depending on hours worked.
So bottom line, right, you need, you need, you need the authorization to hire one or two part-time employees to help with this endeavor?
An authorization or acknowledgement that that's what I would need to do, so, I, I, uh, whatever the board prefers.
You think it's gonna take two?
So, yeah, there's a, there's another person that, that I've engaged locally that, that knows and understands the, the licensing process backwards and forwards, so, and actually has provided me a, a really wonderful summary of.
So to peel the next layer of the onion on this, uh, I would, I would entertain a motion to, to, on this, if the board so desires, to, to authorize staff to, um, bring on, uh, no more than two part-time employees for the duration of, uh, negotiating, navigating this process.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes, and you hired whoever you feel like you need to hire.
Thank you.
Within reason.
Yeah, within reason.
Okay, so the next layer of the onion.
Yes, sir, so the third that would absolutely require approval would be suspension of any policy related to a procurement of this type. Now, I went back and consulted the ordinance, so we would not be in violation of any county ordinance, and we will be acting under the advisement of the attorney as far as state law is concerned. It's just a matter of making sure that we're compliant with county policy. I mean, I don't think there's any other way to get it done. Simply because of the timeline, it's, it's not because we don't wanna comply with it.
So.
A, 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 a good RFP process, as we, as we've shown, is a minimum forty-five-day process. You know, uh.
It, it's, it's, when was so narrow because of the, the date that the EMS services were proposed of?
Terminating their contract?
Or was it just their annual turnover?
So, a lot of the scheduling is actually in either state law or it's an administrative code. So it, it sets off a series of ten-day periods that the advisory council has to follow. And as a matter of fact, that, that process actually kicked off today, we had an advisory council meeting today where we established a zoning committee, a five-member zoning committee that will, uh, uh, and we also approved the chair for that committee. So the, the reason we need to have a license application in and approved is that that following day after the twenty-sixth is when the first ten-day period opens for the, um, question and answer period for the RFP process, so that, that's, that's when we would be developing an RFP with the, with our chosen third party. We would have to have that person locked in as our partner by then, and it's just not a lot of time to do it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and move forward with the suspension of this leave. So we can move this process along.
Okay, so I, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to restate it for Jessica the best I can, my, our attorney's not, not present, so. So we are, I have a motion made and seconded to authorize staff to suspend our standard procurement policy as it's related to, um, um, negotiating terms with a licensed EMS provider to help us in this zone application process. Does that sound right?
It sounds right.
As long, with the caveat, as long as the county attorney agrees that we're, we're staying conforming within.
State law laws.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. Next layer of the onion. I think that pretty much gets you, gets you off and running, doesn't it?
We get to the sweet part yet?
I think, I think that, I think that was it, really, as far as what you need to, to, to make this.
The, the, the last thing I would add, Mr. Chairman, it may behoove us to go ahead and try to determine dates for meetings, so we'll have targets to meet.
I think, maybe. But I wanna give you a date that you can't leave.
I think, yeah, why don't, why don't we just say, look, this is, this is the most significant issue that we've got going on right now, other than our FY twenty-two budget, and, and I don't know, is anybody on travel?
For the holidays?
For, for, for December?
You not going anywhere?
I'm not going either, but.
I was like, stay home for a little while.
Right.
The, uh, is there anything anybody's got going on? I wanna just try to make Jessica's job as easy as possible, I mean, you still have your normal travel throughout the month on work.
Usually she's the one that says, yeah.
So she's used to navigating that, and then the only thing I have is I've got, I've got a little.
Well, just remember, we can always do virtual, remote, if we need to, if push comes to shove, we can always.
And then, and then when we get to the point where we're, we're bringing in our partners from the city and, and anybody else, you know, I, I know there's gonna be a lot of, um, meetings to, as we, as we start meetings, even more these people are defining this, um, so, you know, we're, we're open, we'll do what we have to do.
Okay.
Where's your beck and call?
About, you going to, uh, pre-warn the city?
I had a discussion with the city manager on Friday before, in advance of this meeting, so he's, he's aware that this was the strategy I was gonna try to deploy.
I, I had, I had a chat with the mayor during a football game on Saturday. And, uh, they, they know, and, you know, they know that there's, there's part of this, you know, as a county, we've gotta do, because we've got to go partner and get, there's the getting the zone license, but then there's also how you gonna pay for it, discussion. And I assured them that they would be at the table, and, you know, we're, we're all ears when it comes to it, so. You know, one of, one of the things is, like Jason said, I, I think a couple of you met Friday with, with one of the providers that has, has expressed some interest, and then I met with two, um, you know, throughout those whole discussions, we kept it, you know, more of an introductory thing, um, not really discussed a lot of specifics about number of ambulances, where would they be, and all that, I mean, everybody that, you know, the two that I've had the privilege to talk with, and they've all said, well, we gotta have the data, you know, they're, we're not gonna say this is what we need based on what somebody else did. You know, their, their, their operation may be a little bit different. One we, particularly one we talked to today was very data-driven, you know, trying to figure out where the needs are, um, mapping, that kinda stuff. But, and we, we have kept the discussion very, we put it, we, we had a talk turkey, you know? We've stayed away from that because, I mean, clearly, um, you know, like Jason said, I, we're, we're from zero to way over there, and, you know, zero, the right number? Term I, I kept hearing a lot today was race to the bottom, but, you know, that's probably not the, that's probably not where we're gonna land. So it, it is, it's, we, we gotta understand that this is gonna give an impact on our budget moving forward. And, and, you know, the last thing I'll say on this is, you know, I mean, we, we, we know that there are folks in the community that are advocating for county, uh, EMS, county-wide EMS. You can't get there between now and February. You know, we can't, we can't, can't buy the ambulances, we can't buy the, the staff, we can't put communication systems in place. It's just not gonna happen. The only way that we're gonna do this is with a third-party licensed EMS provider. It is the only way that the state will even talk to us, 'cause initially, when we had a conversation with the state, they, they said, no, you can't apply, because by, on record, they showed that we had licensed EMS providers here in the community. Well, then they came back a week later and said, oh, well, we've looked at it, and, and, uh, because of the level of service that was available from some of those, those, it, it opened up the door for us to, to do this, so. And I know that there's a lot of people out there paying attention to this discussion, and I just wanted to put that out there, so.
Step one of many, many steps.
And we got eighteen days to get it done.
What was that Smokey and the Bandit song?
You can't even get a license approved in six weeks, and we got eighteen days to do this, so.
But Jason's a good rascal, so I think, you'll work hard.
What about the rest?
And Jessica.
Uh, is there, is there anything else related to this that we need to, we talked about meeting times, we suspended the purchasing, acquired staff to help with this and to, uh.
I think those motions cover it.
You might have anything else?
Yep, all y'all people that are watching, the Board of Commissioners understands the, the stress that this is causing people, but we are doing our best to get a solution to what's happening. And, um, hopefully, within the next, I mean, it is sixteen days, you said, James? Eighteen days, that, uh, Jason, hopefully, we can, we can get something done, so like I said.
They're both a little bit stressed too.
Yeah.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit.
We talk about those things, we talk about, frequently talk about those things that keep us awake at night, and, and this is the one thing that's kept me awake at night the last few weeks, and, uh, you know, so.
But we care.
We wanna hear from them, and, and I have complete faith in, in, in y'all, and, uh.
Don't forget Jessica.
I'm here to help.
And don't forget Jessica, she's got a lot to do.
That's why I looked at her. You know, um, all right, Sheriff, we appreciate you hanging out.
Thank y'all very much, I appreciate y'all for having me.
You don't have any amulets, do you?
I don't have any amulets, but if I can, you can let me know.
Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
What's that mean? But we gonna have to, we gonna have to get together sometime pretty soon, before the fourteenth, or we'll have some directions by.
On.
Call you?
Well, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll have some discussion amongst ourselves, and, um, I'll, let's, let's just all talk to ourselves and figure it out, you know, what is, I, I mean, I, I gotta sleep on it. I, I, and I do, I do wanna, I do wanna try to take some pu- public feedback on this.
Are we adjourned so I can?
We've not adjourned yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm just gonna have to put the, the bottom line on that, uh, on the, on that fifteen percent. That, how, you know, what's the total dollar figure it's gonna impact on, but we, we, we got no figures, I'm sure.
If you could, if you could, I mean, we've got the, the eight percent that you, you had done, if you can just compare it to, okay? Eight percent, fifteen percent. What is, what is that bottom line?
Wanna discuss it right now?
No. No, 'cause I, I, I mean, I think we've accomplished what we want to accomplish, I mean, we, we, we had a very good discussion.
Two and a half percent.
I had all of that announced.
What is the, what is the bottom line, what's, what are we looking at? Staff, is, staff positions filled, what is, what is the difference between eight percent that we discussed and now fifteen percent?
About two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
You confident in that number? It's about four million dollars difference here?
Change between, right, today's ask versus previous ask, and so, the, um.
Not quite a quarter of a mil, about a fifth of a mil difference, but the total, but the total bill is going to be, um.
Well, the ink, the, uh, amount above what's the average of everyone else in the county is getting is about five-hundred and. Hold on, have some names.
If you can just put together some kind of, whatever, executive summary, what it, what it means, and, and send it out to us. And then we need to, um, based on our discussions, and, as we see how things go in the next, the fourteenth is next week. You know, maybe if we just, we just discuss it on the fourteenth and approve it, or if, if there's need for us to come back together and talk about it. You can have two versions, right?
Well, I mean. We can draft two resolutions, I suppose, and.
Give us a fill-in-the-blank.
That's the last board meeting in December for us.
Yes, well, last regularly scheduled board meeting, it won't be our last meeting.
This will be great, different.
I think it's, if you, uh, wanted it.
You can, yeah.
Well, he's very different about the time and date.
And with everything else we've got going, I just, I just have a hard time, I mean, I'm struggling with this.
Mr. Chairman, just for a, a, an update, our, our CFO reminded me also that on the fourteenth, we'll also be, um, asking the board to make a final decision on architectural services, just as a reminder.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn, or is there other business?
I got one.
A motion from Commissioner Jones, there's a second, Commissioner Watson's, there's a second?
Second.
Second, and, and, all in favor? For adjourn, thank y'all. We're still live.
Yep.
I'll probably answer that, I'm not counting off.
No, well.